You're making good cars or some other cars.
And he probably is. It wouldn't be CEO.
We'll call the budgeting back to orders. We'll start by sharing with Susan and Debbie.
Good morning. Um, just hopefully we can have us through the day today as we did yesterday. Appreciate all the questions and the discussions that we had and let's keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Susan, it's all yours.
Thank you. Okay, good morning, everybody. This morning I just gave you one sheet, the 2025 summary because nothing changed from the 2024 from yesterday. So I do nothing. We'll change on that one. But I added a couple of things here as discussions went on yesterday. I saw there's a couple of funds I probably need to honor that were not due in leverage on line four and your jail lit on line 12. And you can see, we discussed some of the challenges yesterday on the jail lit line and how much larger the budgeted dispersment side is than the receipt side. I've talked about those, Debbie, and there are some of those items from budgeted dispersments that are also duplicated in other budgets till you decide where you want to pull them out of, which side they want to come from. So yes, there's still decisions to be made, but this is just sort of indication. We made a few smaller changes yesterday. Nothing really large that swayed general fund one way or another. Added about seventy-six thousand dollars to the human capital development fund. But other than that, there were changes were minimal, but this is your scorecard for where you start the day today.
Any questions?
And we still don't know lit and we still don't know three-year growth requirement. There's nothing to change.
Now, I did have an email from the LTF that said, take it with a grain of salt, that we should have lit numbers by the fifteenth, which is Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday. That doesn't mean eight AM Thursday. It could mean midnight Thursday, but that's, yeah. Keep your fingers crossed we know tomorrow sometime.
I saw that come across too.
Great.
Question before you, oh, sorry, on the duplication what we had, I don't think.
Both.
Both funds, do we know what that amount is?
No, I don't know the amount.
It's fine.
Do you know, Debbie?
I can, I can get it.
It's fine. It'll just from just.
You should, you should find most of it today because it's facilities.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm, I'm looking at this jail lit on, because I've seen the last two months in that fund. I feel, I feel so comfortable that we're fine.
Brett, did we, did we duplicate any figure? We moved it in one, in one. Yes, lit jail lit. And we have communication officers with the offices. Okay. Communication office is the only one that is in both places, which. The amount is like eight, five, eighty-five?
Yeah.
That's the amount.
Eight fifty, one thirty-seven is in PS lit and jail lit, which is eleven seventy and twelve thirty thirty. Eight fifty, one thirty-seven. And then the others are maintenance for his staffing and.
Is that the contract?
Contractual.
The contractual?
Is it utilities as well?
And some of the utilities. Not all of them, but some of them.
What was that fund again?
Oh, three, eight, oh, facilities.
I'm just trying to get up closer to look where we're at. That's all I have. I'm sorry.
We've plenty of time. We don't have, we're cornered for schedule until nine thirty, but we can start early if we.
That's fine. What was the, what, what was the other one? What did you just?
Staffing and some, and some utilities and facilities.
What was, uh, utilities is two hundred?
It's a piece of it. How much, do we know how much of the utilities is doubled up?
Is it the full amount?
No, I don't think so. It's just the piece that they're estimating.
Is it the extra two hundred thousand?
Yeah, just the part from jail.
Just the part, but I don't know what it is.
Would, would you say that the extra for the jail is additional that you added?
He does have, so he does have jail building and CCD as well. So some of that could be.
He's always got that in mind. I don't know if the number is two oh.
I'm sorry.
Two oh five.
Let me, two oh five is.
Two oh five is in CCD for the jail building.
Okay, let me pause on, on utilities, there's a two hundred thousand dollar increase. Is that what that amount is for this? Okay, so two hundred thousand. So I'm at.
One point two.
One, are we at one point two already?
Well.
I'm at eight fifty plus two hundred thousand.
Right, but then two oh five for jail building and CCD. And then staffing, staffing facilities, do we know what that number is related to the doubling up? One point two.
Where's the, where's the, where are you getting your staffing at?
Well, she's, some of the facility staffing is in both places. So I'm just trying to get the number for you.
I'm not, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm just, so this one point three, one point seven is actually almost scrapped now. I get it. All right. I'm just, I just want to make sure there's not a, something else sitting here that is going to be a gotcha. As we like to say, a surprise, Mr. Sharon. No surprise.
There's a lot of surprises.
Well, I mean, out of this jail lit that, out of this.
And I get those things. Four additional and four.
Yes, for.
Two additional, four total, two additional.
Yeah.
So.
No. For, yes.
Plus the contract.
Plus the contract.
So how much roughly?
How much?
Four ten, yeah, four ten.
Doubled up?
Yes.
And also, kind of, no.
Yes, so four ten total.
So one point six is the number.
One, six, six, five, six, two. Okay. Ending, I just wanted to look at jail lit, only because I know it's been, sorry, any questions to you, Dave?
No, I'm good.
Josh?
Keep moving.
Which one?
And then you also have facilities as a one point six for capital projects, which is also in CCD, eleven thirty-eight.
Capital project?
Facilities. But it's also.
Getting the windows, but I don't know that for sure.
I think most of it is, I think.
I'm, but I thought that was only one point two. I'm not.
Well, he'll tell us. It's, so one point six in both places.
That's what I'd like to know, Susan. Susan wants to know why it hasn't happened.
Here's the question.
Well.
We'll get to it.
He'll, he'll tell us, because I'm out with him. It's, it's fine. Let him defend himself.
One, one, um, what was the other, were you guys ahead of another one? Can we go, can we look at food and beverage a little bit? Eleven fifty-seven.
Why are we a million three in the hole?
And starting the year.
Starting the year is a negative. That just seems odd.
Is that because of what we do with highway?
Yeah, he's put it in the negative.
Yeah.
So he encovers, he encovers contracts, but then is also budgeting off that same number. So we end up in the negative.
Was there additional or something? There's a large number of, look at the twenty-four amount that made it look like it's going to be negative this year. So if you're not going to spend stuff this year.
Right.
Needs to be, you know, maybe three or. Yeah, yeah, I think that would be.
I've seen this in the highway.
But that'll be.
But then if you look, but just like the budget for this year is more anticipated than probably you're going to bring in.
Right.
So because last you brought, I think you're about one point seven for this year, on track for around one point seven this year, the budget's over two, I believe, for next year. So I mean, there's probably a bit of discrepancy there.
Part of what we heard from Alan.
Like some.
Project detail.
Yeah. Good, well, get back to that. That's not exactly the way all that would happen.
Okay, we'll go through the highway.
It's covered, it's.
Okay. Uh, I know about public safety, but that'll, I know what that'll balance out at. Uh, no food and beverage. Yeah, you can have, I don't know what human capital is going to.
No, I think we're good. Let's get started. Let's roll.
That's the corner. Are you ready?
No one's touching the healthy.
Nobody wants to. Thanks for bringing. What's your, what's your fund, sir?
Oh, oh, seven.
Yeah.
Oh, 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 seven. Justin, I don't know if you heard yesterday what we're doing with salaries. We're, was contemplated five percent, but then we, we're going to talk about this in September, but then there are some specific positions that we have to go back and look at. I believe there are two in your office.
Okay, yeah, no, no problem at all. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Good morning. Excited to hear everything.
I'm sorry. Do you know who's actually Justin? Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure you were here so we can start.
Give your binder. It's in the very top.
Was even a tab for it? Well, last time I was.
I was, I'm only a mom to two. We can't be a mom and three.
Well, you missed a page yesterday. Sheriff, you heard that on the record. All right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, hey, it sounds like everything went pretty well yesterday. I'm excited to be here today. Thank you, Councilor Reiner, for meeting with me. We had kind of, I think it was kind of a cool moment. We met at our local gas station, kind of in between our houses. And went to like the one booth back there and we conducted our budget business back there. It was all the talk in the Dover area.
I didn't know we had a Bucky's here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Much smaller than I thought.
Backed by the chocolate milk.
Yeah.
Can almost picture it.
I mean, it was very, I mean, it was cool. It was pressure. It was, it was fun. So, um, so we are doing well. I'm kind of excited to report our caseload is down this year. Um, from, we went year after year after year. So basically, every year that I took over, our caseload had increased fairly substantially every year. I had the COVID, going into COVID, during COVID, post-COVID, and it looks like we're kind of hopefully leveling out and trending back downward. And I think that's kind of exciting. Anytime we can get less people through my office, I think that says a lot about our community, you know, those type of things. Also want to point out, kind of a big deal is overdoses are down this year pretty substantially and our self-harm deaths are down this year. That's a big deal for our community. We've really done a tremendous amount as far as working together with our public, private partners on addressing issues, issue. Started a, it's called SOFR team, Suicide Overdose State Attorney Due Team, a few years ago, but that's brought in like all of our mental health providers, our schools participate that in that. We've got a whole, like a conglomerate that meets and we go over things and we look at things that are happening in our community. We look at the tools that we have employees in our community and we're making projects and very specific targeting at messaging and getting resources to people to, to help them. And I'll never be able to quantify and say all these folks are, made it today because of that, but what I can say is we've really launched a very substantial effort addressing those issues and the data suggests that we're making headway on that. That's exciting to me. So for this year, on budget, we're on budget. We're doing well. Like I said, we budgeted based off of the numbers we have there. We are below the caseload. Last year, I think we got to a hundred and forty-eight cases. This year, we're down to, I think we're projected to be at like one sixteen point five, which is a very substantial drop. Last year, we were averaging about eleven and a half cases a month. This year, we're right at nine. We had like two months that were really low, that were below that baseline. We'll see if we catch up, but right now the data trend. And I went back and looked at every year, how I've been forecasting from, we were at this point, how did we end up in the year? And it was relatively accurate by the time we got to August on average cases. So I think that's probably a pretty good number for us to look at. So that, that will translate to us being under budget. So I don't have anything to anticipate that we're going to have to come back for us for any money come, before the end of this year.
So, so our biggest thing we're going to look at is the, like the twenty-seven percent increase that you show in the budget this year.
Yes, sir.
How we got to that.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. So we're moving into our new building this year. And with that, I've been, through grant funding and stuff, been able to basically be a force multiplier for the things that we're doing. So a lot of the stuff, every year, so the stuff that I knew that we were going to need going into the building, because I did not want to incur a bunch of costs going into new building, I've been able to slowly acquire those things. So really, we've got like a biohazardous waste removal, which is something that's going to be new to us. So there's certain kinds of waste that you just can't throw away in the trash. And when we were at the hospital, that was taken care of by the hospital. That's something that we're going to have to take care of and do something timely out there. So that's like my big one that I have to accomplish this year. I put that out for requests for essentially bids to three providers on there. I had one provider that was like right at two hundred dollars per removal, but that was set on a very, I will come on this day of the week at this time, and there was no flexibility on that for us. There was one that was slightly over at two hundred and twenty dollars removal, and that's I call and they'll come get it. So forecasting, we say basically a hundred people, a hundred times a year. So on the budget request there, that's my primary item. Yeah, I put for twenty-two thousand for removal of biohazardous waste, that's regulated waste.
And Justin, is that, is that different than when I met with Max in facilities?
Yes.
Talked about the underground tank that has to be cleaned and removed. And is this, is this separate from that?
That is separate from that. So this is like stuff that becomes saturated with biohazardous waste, which is like towels and stuff like that. It's stuff that I can't keep for a very long time.
Right.
That causes its own hazards. So that is a separate item. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. You want me to start with you personal services? Would that be reasonable? Or where would you like me to jump in at?
Well, that's salaries.
If you have, yeah.
I saw I have some mind changes and some requests in there. So my staff is per diem, besides my chief deputy and I, is all per diem. It, in that, basically they're not compensated except for when they go on runs. So all of my employees have other lives and other jobs that they go try and work at. It is becoming more and more difficult for me to give people that have free time to do that. Our July schedule, I will reference that because that's when the budget intake form was. I, I had like over twenty shifts that when I put it out to my team, so I put out a sign-up genius and say, hey, who is available to work in these twelve-hour slots? And when we got the schedule built, I had a whole bunch of gaps that we had to go back and do with that. So my hardest point and challenge right now is during the daytime when people are working, they're going to high-class type jobs. So one of the things that I was looking at, how do I solve this? I talked with Johnson County, Hendricks County has started adding like administrative assistants slash deputy coroners. So in my request this year, and to talk about that, is I've asked for two part-time, non-benefited positions to work based twenty-four hours a week, so three eight-hour days. In a perfect world, I would slate that for like a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. That gives two things. Shane and I are both working in the office during the day. That gives us someone as a regular point of contact for like answering phones, handling some paperwork stuff that, there's a lot of paperwork that goes with our cases. And then also during the daytime, which is our most challenging time to fill shifts, we would have someone that is being compensated that we could rely on to, to make those, make those calls. So I talked with, there's not a, that position quote-unquote doesn't exist in like our like job matrix. I talked with human resources. I based that off of like, took the job description, solicited job descriptions from other counties, blended those into what would work for Boone County, gave it to human resources and said, what do you think? We came up with like the administrative assistant kind of job description for compensation there. I have that job description. I'd be glad to get it to you all there. So I thought if we did that, that would give us flexibility and would really help our staffing gap there. So that's my request on that.
Is that in here?
Yeah, it is, yes.
It's at the bottom.
The forty-nine, nine, two.
Oh, I see it. Okay, thank you.
So that, that'll be one that we will look at in September as we're going to make that decision.
Yes, absolutely. And two things I want to.
The, the on-call.
Yes.
Have you had on-call before?
I have not had on-call before. So that was like a policy that was instituted.
Last budget.
Last budget cycle. I'd like to get that implemented.
I can comment on that. I know we, this is something we talked about at the end. We did it for highway and I said, we were saying in facilities, we needed to.
Improvation.
Improvation. We needed to discuss that for the coroner this year, because he thought he would be fine for this year, but we needed to discuss it this year for next year.
When I look at, flip on my little sheets here, it breaks down to a pretty, yeah, so if the ten thousand, I think, is what the other agencies or other departments have used, three hundred sixty-five days, twenty-four hours, that's payment per day of twenty-seven point four. So it breaks down to a dollar fourteen an hour. But it's something that I can give to my folks to say, hey, thank you for being on-call.
Correct, oh, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I think part of the discussions from last summer were that when your staff are on-call, they can't do anything. They can't leave the county. They can't.
So they need to be able to, they need, they have to be able to respond.
And they don't get paid for anything unless there's a run.
Correct.
And so this would compensate them for really being restricted in what they're allowed to do for that twelve-hour shift.
It's like, you know, I guess right now I have one employee who's on-call three hundred and thirty-six hours, which is a fair amount of time. So, you know, just trying, what are, what are those little things that I can get back? If the world cost more right now, I mean, it's, the inflation's up and stuff, how do I get something where I can keep quality people that are, you know, are wanting to do the job and we keep them in there? Yes, sir.
How, how much, how much time is spent between you, your chief deputy versus the other employees of being on-call?
Yep, so I anticipate that. So I have it down here. So like this month, I have my office hours. I personally am on, I'm on-call two hundred and eighty-eight hours. Shane is on-call two hundred and eighty-eight hours in addition to our office time working here.
Thanks for that. What, what is that in relation to the totality of everyone? So they, is it, are you, are there eight thousand hours, ten thousand hours? Like what is that breakdown? Are you, or the two of you on-call fifty percent of the time?
Yes.
Or?
Yeah, so we, we've operated under a tiered system. So we have a primary investigator on-call that responds on normal, what, what normal runs for us. And then either Shane, myself, and then we have a senior investigator who has the most experience, who will fill in on stuff, we're also on-call with them. So we have two people on-call a day. So runs where there's like deaths by violence, car crashes, homicides, suicides, pediatric deaths, or anytime one of our investigator goes out there, we want to have that option for them to say, hey, we need, we automatically go on those run codes, but our investigators can call us at any time when we come out for those.
So when you're actually at the office or working, you're not paying somebody on-call at the same time?
We don't pay anybody for on-call. So there's people on-call.
I'm talking next year when you're doing it. If you're actually working that day, you're not paying, you're not paying somebody else to be on-call.
No, no, no. So if, if we were able to get the two part-time spots, that will eliminate anyone else being on-call during those hours. So yeah, it would not be a double pay tax situation.
What would happen if, if I'm one of the employees and I'm on-call and for whatever reason, you're not able to get hold of me, so you call Kenny and Kenny says, yeah, I can come in and help?
Yeah, so it's automatically set up through dispatch. The, yeah, the, we don't, our dispatch system's not by radio, it's by phone call. So a law enforcement agency or a public safety agency requests the coroner, the communications has our schedule, they call the person who's on-call. The procedure's set up that after ten minutes, if they have not been called back or they did not answer, they automatically call the supervisor and the supervisor responds. Yeah, Councilor Williams, did I ask your question at all?
Did, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just trying to digest everything, so I'll just continue. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay.
But your de, your deputy's a fireman also, correct?
Yes, and we're on.
Off the shifts, so I give you one out of three days that maybe somebody's not there.
Yes, correct. Well, so I'm a C-shift, he's a B-shift, so he was in the office all day yesterday while I was at the firehouse. And then we both work today and then I'll be there tomorrow for him.
But then you have somebody in the office as an assistant all the time?
Not all the time. We try, we try as much as we can. There's also life stuff that pops up that, you know, we're not, it's not a hundred percent of the time.
What would happen if there was tragically more than your staff can handle? What would you do then?
So I automatically pull, so we're set up to expand very quickly. So that would be, we work through our list. So we all get, we have an app that we utilize that knows devices of runs. So I, on a normal run, five or six people look at the run. So I would be able to look at that and pull the audience and then also the automatic mutual aid. If it was substantial enough, we would utilize the state, state, state of Indiana. They have basically mass fatality assistance. We'd be able to utilize that.
Thank you.
My other request on there that I put on there is mental health for my team. My team sees a lot, would do a lot, go through a lot, since we don't have anyone that's on benefits in our entire staff. And I know, I think the sheriff's department has a plan for mental health type, being able to send someone for like essentially EAP or to see a mental health provider one-on-one. I know there had been some discussion with some of the other agencies, I think the prosecutor's offices, looking at implementing or has implemented. Yeah, something similar to that. And I'd like to, and I asked human resources, we got the information, that's what that number is based off of, and that would be like allocating for essentially two hundred hours of mental health services if we needed. I can tell you this year, twice this year, I've had employees in crisis that the best I can do is go pick them up and we go drive around and try and talk through things.
Yeah.
You're fortunate enough to have mental health coverage through their other employer and we're able to get piped in there. But I would like to get to the point where Justin picking you up in curbside and driving around is not, not the plan. So I'd ask for that on that.
First, thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
And I cannot stress to this board how important that is, that these people are getting mental health services for the work that they're doing, the things that they're seeing, the people they're talking to. It takes a toll on them and it is crucial that they not only can keep doing that, but can keep doing it health, in a healthy way too.
Thank you.
But that's, maybe that's something we need to look at with the whole county, not just those offices that deal with that every day. I mean, there's other offices also that could use mental health, you know, help.
Those are insurance.
And I wonder if it's, if you're not on the insurance plan, can the county put something together that would benefit everybody and not just spending it for one specific department? Whereas anybody could go and it's, you know, kind of on your own at your own time, where nobody else in the county knows you're doing this.
I do agree. I think it's something I'll look at and see, you know, obviously they see a lot of different things that others don't get. There's other issues.
I mean, I feel like there's other offices that, you know, I'm.
Confused.
Yes, that at a different degree.
Right.
Need that mental health help.
Yeah.
And I, I feel like it's something the county should offer as a whole to those that don't carry the insurance as well.
Yeah, I was going to point that out. This is for your non-benefited.
Right.
Employees and so, yeah.
No, Justin, three, three years ago, my oldest son, grandson, due to mental health issues ended his life by suicide. And I remember going to Major, Major Brian Stevenson. Going to Brian and asking him how him and his staff deal with the mental health issues that go along with their job. He said, you know, Kevin, years ago, we would do, like you described, we would drive around in a car and we would talk to somebody that might be in a car with us and help us deal with this. We might go home at the end of the night and talk to our spouses or family about it. But, but the truth is, not until the ability came where they could go where the sheriffs set up in place for those individuals to go have conversation with those professionals, how to deal with it. Did it really help the staff with the Boone County Sheriff's Department and other municipalities throughout the county? So I just want to say thank you for what you did. And Debbie, I'm going to echo what you said. All of us as a council work real hard to see if we can get this taken care of.
Well, I think as employees, we also see, we have things that happen in our private lives.
You do?
They kind of trickle over into our work lives.
I think, I think the answer to this is, is what you said. People come here and deal with more, and when you're dealing with the public, things just happen. Like, I think the, the bigger thing is what helps benefit employees overall, not just in the work life, but if it's staying open to your personal life, that's what, that's basically what I'm looking at, so.
We're supposed to provide them the tools to be able to do their job and I would, without a doubt, say this is one of those tools.
Thank you. If I was able to spark a conversation, I appreciate that. On that, I do have one line, the, my autopsy line. So previously, when we were working out with them, I reduced that number this year. So we were essentially, based off the amount of people that we could keep in our custody, if we were kind of forced into, we would do examinations whenever we could, as fast as we could, using pathology team that comes from out of here. So we operate off of their schedule. uh, using pathology team that comes from out of here. Uh, so we operate off of their schedule. So efficiency, like, was, still be very efficient. But like, if it, if they came back and said, hey, we can do this at nine P M. tonight, we, we'd do it. Uh, which meant that sometimes we would have, we'd have to build this line so that if I wasn't able to be there and somebody else was able to be there to finish the case from a forensic exam standpoint, we would do that. Since we're gonna be in-house, uh, in our own facility, we're gonna be much, uh, more able to control, um, that. So I brought that expense down. Uh, so right now that, uh, the four thousand dollars remaining there would be like, training opportunities as we have new employees that have to come in and participate during their externship and do, uh, stuff like that. So I did bring that line number down.
Which one?
Uh, it's autopsy, deputy autopsy line.
Zero seven one five.
Oh, okay. Yeah, 'cause I was looking down here, yeah.
I'm sorry. No, no, I'm sorry. Brought that line down. Yeah.
That one went up, so.
And I actually, I, I wanted that, I believe that's, uh, that was a clerical error on my part, on the, the up it.
Okay.
I meant to not up it.
Okay.
On autopsy fees?
Yeah, on autopsy.
So it should remain?
It should remain the same. I think, uh, what I did when I, uh, looked at that line is gonna keep it at a flat change. I think there was funds that had been moved over. That number was different from that. I caught it after I submitted it.
So it should be one sixty-six, one fifty?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, the heat supplies line, the only thing, uh, I asked was funded at a thousand dollars last year. Um, I'm going into the new building. There's, you know, there's more, gonna be more like pens, uh, you know, usable stuff. Um, and I wanted to just add a little bit of, uh, uh, added a thousand dollars, make that two thousand dollars for office supplies as we get set up in the new building.
Do you think, as I'm looking at, um, your twenty, twenty-four percent remaining, you've got eighty-five point three percent remaining, do you think, so this is just like startup to get you started? Do you think that'll anticipate that coming down next year?
I do, yes, right. So I, I always keep that, uh, very, very conservative towards the end of the year to see what we need. Um, and with the grants and stuff and with the way we've done things, typically I don't spend those lines down until towards the end of the year.
It's kind of the same with your fuel line, you're at eighty percent right now and you're raising it up another two hundred dollars, almost three hundred.
Did you mean to keep that one flat?
I meant to, I apologize.
No, that's totally okay.
Yeah.
That's why we do this.
We like to flex things out.
Yes, absolutely. And then I think, looking at it, uh, the fuel line went up as a result of, uh, fuel prices coming up. Our spending on fuel is very minimal. Um, so I, I think, you know, if that's something we're gonna look at, potentially dialing that back, that probably could. Um, we just don't drag the vehicles. Essentially, if we drag them to and from runs or if we have to take stuff down to the state lab, that's, that's where we're at.
Where are you feeling that, Ben?
Uh, COA, uh, you're in love with it.
Yeah.
Uniform, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. It looks like you used your amended numbers to fill out your Form One.
Then that, that would be where my error is.
Well, Joe, that's okay. You have it in front of you.
I do.
So should uniforms be the same?
It should be the same.
Okay.
S twenty-four, S twenty-four.
Yes. Okay. I apologize.
That's all right.
I'm looking, I'm, I'm looking good. I'm like, these are a lot of them.
So it's five nine eight nine, believing it at five nine eight nine for uniforms or you?
Yeah, I don't, don't need it. Do not need any.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then P P E, should that be nine four eight oh or the?
Reflective of whatever it was last year.
Okay.
That'll cut about ten thousand.
And then vehicle repair?
Yeah.
Same thing?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Uh, keep it what it was last year.
Ten thousand?
Um, we've been fortunate to, uh, not have any, uh, thing bad happen. Um, that's good. The, uh, the primary vehicles are like one ninety-nine. Uh, I've got, uh, two vehicles in the process that were, um, end of life for the sheriff's department. They're in the process of getting plated. So no expense to us, so, uh, we'll improve our vehicle situation as soon as I get the plates down there, um, and have vehicles that will hopefully be pull over to your mark and examine there. It's perfect for what we do. They fit great, fit, fit our equipment great, um, and it's meeting our needs fine.
And what did you say about the autopsy fees?
Uh, autopsy fees. The one?
It stays the same.
Stays the same.
Okay.
And I wanted to talk to you on that. I did, uh, some forecasting late in the evening last night. Last thing I do before I do here is I go through the book I made for the last year. Um, and I don't know if it would help. We can potentially bring that number down a little bit if you wanted to. Uh, our, I anticipate off the number, so we forecasted off the one forty-eight number last year. Um, we're not, uh, going to be, so I anticipate, uh, this year, we'll have forty, forty-one point five cases is the, the, the number remaining this year. We have, uh, a clearance rate of, of the cases we go to and go to like respond to. Of those cases, last year, we averaged forty-one percent of those cases were cases that went on to forensic exam. So right now, I anticipate, um, we will have an additional forty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents of expenses if things go just exactly as predicted, which would leave us, uh, with, um, expected budget remaining lining that line at seventy-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
All right. So what do you want to adjust it?
Well, I was hoping that if, if that was something, then that would be in place where maybe we could take that, uh, twenty-two thousand dollars in biohazardous, uh, expenses that we're going to have next year. Is that something we could re-improve? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is it easier, Debbie, to strike this down or do a re-improve later?
It'd be easier to strike it at what you want.
I was about to say, how about you take it down and then we'll just, we'll just budget the twenty-two thousand for biohazardous waste and then as we come into the budget next year, we'll know what your biohazardous waste is and we're gonna adjust that accordingly.
Yeah.
So you can take this down to what you think is appropriate based on what you think your numbers would be.
If we take it down to twenty-two thousand, it'd be one forty-four, one fifty.
But you still have an additional seventy thousand, so.
Yeah, I anticipate seventy-two thousand.
But then we take twenty-two thousand and then we're at fifty-two.
So how much?
And we don't like additionals.
Yeah, so that, that's, so, my, my assumption about the math has historically been that, that's right, like.
Till you tell us.
Okay. Can I bring that number back to you? Right, like, sit down and calculate. Is that fair?
Sure.
We'll take the twenty-two thousand out now and then you, you adjust it now, because we'll be back in September.
Yeah, okay. Is that, all right.
I thought, I thought we were keeping the twenty-two because it's a line item, right? And then we were gonna maybe bring down the one sixty-six, one fifty to something more, um.
To one forty-four?
Well, that's, but then that would, that would just take into account, that, that would take out the twenty-two thousand dollar line item, which she wants to keep, right? She wants to keep the line item.
Oh, I was keeping it there. I was just taking out twenty-two thousand from.
He's still gonna come back and give us the number.
But I thought the one sixty-six, one fifty was gonna be reduced after he did his calculation, where he knows he's gonna be way under and it's not the twenty-two. Sorry.
Just bring us back.
Yeah, I'll follow it together. It's something that looks clean.
Okay.
No, you know what I mean? You don't know what I mean.
I think we're saying the same thing, but you're talking in like CPA language.
Not legal terms, CPA has to do it.
It's that special math that she does.
No.
It's that Indiana Core Forty man, but CPA added to it.
Thank you, sorry for that.
Yeah, that's okay. And then my only other, uh, actual add this year is, uh, cleaning supplies, uh, for us to do that. We're gonna do all of our own internal cleaning after that. Uh, we've developed a schedule, so we'll clean after every case and then we'll have, uh, cleaning that we do.
And that's just in the morgue itself?
Yeah, in the morgue itself, yes.
When you guys were at the morgue at the hospital, did you guys do the cleaning or did their chain of tour staff do it?
I would get it in a physician that was fairly presentable and then they had the actual like deep cleaning, obverse occurred with, with their professionals.
Thank you.
And that is all of my adjustments for this year. Is there a request?
Thank you. Much better, much cleaner now.
I'm very sorry for my error.
No, no.
Thanks.
Thanks for being here.
Yep.
I, I was, I, I asked you about your, your hours only just, I think John asked, because your, your chief deputy is a, is a fireman as well.
Yeah.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to get an understanding of like how that works.
Yeah.
If both of you are on call and Kenny asked a question as well, like, hey, if somebody's on call and they're sitting in the office as an admin as well, are you doing, like, is the double duty?
Well, so we'll go, right? Uh, so a lot, like, if I'm in the office and something, uh, pops off, uh, like typically I go with Shane. We'll just go on the run and get things started for it. Um, so when we're in the office doing office stuff, if there's, you know, our goal is to respond to crises and handle those type of things. Um, so it's very common for me, uh, when a run comes out, just, I'm centrally located, I'm already by the vehicle and the equipment. Um, I'll go make that, uh, initial contact, start the run, um, and just try and be helpful.
And get there for the people that you're responding to, so that if someone's there, they're not just sitting there waiting, I think that's.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, so it's a trickle-down effect. So, uh, as far as being timely from our office, so our law enforcement officers respond and, uh, the fire and police departments respond, so they get there, they do their portion of it. Um, and they're waiting essentially for us to get there. Um, sometimes they have to stay there, but once we get there, uh, talk with them, learn everything we have to learn, then we can free up our public safety partners.
Yeah.
Um, and do it, do it stuff there, so.
So when we're looking at this budget, uh, we, it'd be minus the salaries, plus I really think it should be minus the, the on-call administrative positions and the mental health, because the mental health is something we, we need to talk about, how we can do that.
Right.
You know, totally within the, the whole departments itself too. So, uh, so those three, I think we ought to exclude. At this time, we'll, we'll talk about them in September if we don't have a resolution on it, so.
Do we wanna wait until you can bring back a number for us on the autopsy fees?
Yeah, I, I guess.
If you wanna wait on, on everything, on this budget, we can wait, because there's no reason to do part of it.
Yeah, 'cause if you could email it to us even by lunch, then maybe we could circle back to it at the end of the day if anyone's okay with it.
I mean, literally, it shells up on my desk.
Sorry if you had other plans today.
This is the only plan. This is the only plan. And peril.
Peril's due.
Peril is due.
Stacey was the first one.
See Stacey? That's one group I wouldn't wanna have there.
Can I, let me just brag on Stacey and Brittany for a hot minute. Anthony, the first time in, I've been doing peril for five years, that we balanced on the first tribe of the sheriff's department in five years.
Is it because of like overtime and everything?
Oh, it's a hot mess sometimes.
No, it's my I T. skills.
I talked about that yesterday. How many employees do you guys process?
Cool. Just a corner, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I had the opportunity to take Mr. Reiner through the, uh, the new building, uh, a few weeks ago, uh, destruction. Uh, thank you very much for getting us to where we are today on that point. Uh, from, I'd love to have all of you out, uh, and walk through it just to see how we're going to be able to better take care of families. Um, that's massive. Um, so if any of you are, must be closer to it. I have invitations always there. Just let me know if you'd like.
It's very nice. Thanks.
I'll go, uh, get those numbers. I'll send it. Who would you like me to send it to?
Debbie.
Debbie.
Yes.
I'll send it to Debbie and then, uh, I'll be available the rest of the day if you want me to come back over.
Thanks a lot.
I have one quick question. Um, with the mental health, it's my vague understanding that like if, uh, someone from the sheriff's office or police department wanted to get mental health, there's like a specific place they have to go?
Not necessarily, unless they, unless they're using ours, right?
Right, that's what.
So that would be, I mean, just trying to figure that out.
Is there anything that, like?
So I work, uh, as close with our mental health providers as anybody in our community.
Okay.
I have really good relationships with them, uh, with, uh, the stuff that I've had to deal with this year. Uh, I was able to kind of pull the audience, uh, as far as the, the man or owners of the, the different things and say, hey, this is what I'm looking for. Who is your best person to deal with that?
Okay.
Um, and get piped in there.
So they don't have to go to like any specific like state program or officer agency?
I can say what we're using, which I think you guys are using, uh, the company on Noblesville. Yeah, so the, 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 the mental health provider is based out of Noblesville and, but they also offer telehealth.
Okay.
Which, so, with, within our office, we talked about this, these ones we're using are first responders specifically trained.
Yes, that's what.
Okay.
Mental health providers.
Okay.
There are not a lot of those in the city.
What's the name of the vendor?
Hathaway's.
Hathaway, that, thank you.
Okay.
Um, so we met with them and, I mean, you guys can talk about more, but, but we recently met with them and, and did the presentation in our office.
Okay.
And so what we're encouraging is our employees to have one in-person and then if they're comfortable doing telehealth, they can use the telehealth. But some people like driving, they like, you know, getting out and clearing their mind and driving to, it's like Noblesville, so.
Can, um, you, whoever chat and then maybe circle back? I'm happy to be like a, a point person if everyone else on the council and, um, then maybe our insurance team can look into that a little bit too, so.
But you think it has to be separated from insurance and H R. so that it is a more private than what our claims process is now?
Than just our regular?
Than just our regular insurance.
Yeah, I don't think it, there's like a claims.
No, I'm just saying, I, I, I think it needs to be not accessible to employees, other employees of the county, department heads.
The information.
All our people.
What I'm trying to say.
Yeah, yeah.
Number. Yeah, we know what number that is. Yeah, so we receive that number and then go forward.
Great. Okay, yeah, yeah.
Doing it on a county-wide basis is not a bad idea. It's a great idea. You need to be careful and not discriminate against the people that have insurance when it's provided only to those people that don't have and the people that do have the insurance are having to pay a co-insurance payment. Uh, so we've gotta be careful and balance that out.
Well, and there's, I mean, 'cause I'm sure you have, both have people in your office that are on our insurance, but this like special first responder type in, or health, mental health is available for them. I think
Yeah, that's a different.
His office might fall into that same category.
It's a different call. I'm talking on a county-wide basis.
They specialize in first responders, right? He would fall in that category. I mean, he, he, what he's saying is, is he's, he's, he sees the same thing we do.
Yeah.
Even, even a little bit above because they're the ones dragging bodies out. I'm sorry, but, but that's what it is, right? So with all that said, I mean, I can, I can definitely see them being that.
And I can, I would, I can share from a person, first person, personal experience. Uh, the work I do here has been the most damaging and devastating psychological work I've done in any public safety and it affected, affected me very substantially many years ago. I was fortunate enough that I recognized it, actually my spouse recognized it and said, you need to address this issue. I went with just a, right, the first time I went to a therapist, I went to just a normal therapist and she listened to what I had to say and I was literally told, I have no idea how to help you, but, uh, by the time you come back, I'm gonna have a plan to get it figured out. And she did. And it was wonderful and good. So having someone who works in public safety is massive.
We also mandate our, our crime scene technicians to go. So, I mean, they don't even have a choice, right? We don't know when they go, what, what's that, anything like that, but it's mandatory just because we're seeing more than our road gangs are because we're going to investigate these trends with the board.
I, I just wanna go back to what I think what Dan was saying is, make, just making sure that whatever the service is, like it's accessible to everyone, like no matter, no matter what. Yeah, I think what you're saying, like, if the county's paying for it, like the county's paying for it.
It just needs to be a little bit more private than just.
Right. I think, and I think you told something about that, like, what you guys deal with, like, we don't know, but we know, like, without getting into the personal information.
There's a group that could be discussing, we could get another detail. I mean, you know, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Can I add one more positive, uh, to your local government collaboration scale?
Sure.
We're kinda cool. So, uh, the prosecutor, so we go out and develop, uh, cases with our law enforcement partners and then ultimately that falls on the prosecutor's office to prosecute those cases. So I think we all do things to save costs, like I use a toxicology lab that's, has a state-funded grant program, so a vast majority of my forensic toxicology is incurred through our cost to us until specialized tests. I did not learn this until the prosecutor, uh, and I had a conversation was, it's free to me, uh, but when they take it, uh, take it over from prosecution, it becomes very, very expensive. Uh, as far as like, I think it was three hundred dollars an hour, it's like gathered paperwork and stuff. So I was saving two hundred bucks on doing the forensic toxicology through this grant program. The prosecutor was eating a tremendous amount of cost on the backend. So we actually talked about how do we solve this. Actually, he came to me and said, uh, I, how are we gonna pay for this? And I'm like, let me find a cost solution. And, uh, so what we've now started doing is on, uh, all of our cases go to the forensic lab for our determining manner and mechanism portion of it. Uh, but anything that appears to have a criminal component, uh, we've developed a policy that we draw, uh, additional labs and it goes to Indiana State Department of Toxicology, which is the same lab that everything else goes. It takes longer, it's not efficient for me as far as making that primary determination, um, but the tests are identical and they come back the same. But on the backside, the prosecutor's office is no longer going to incur, the toxicology folks will come up for free, the paperwork will come up for free. And I thought that was a pretty innovative way.
Excellent.
Yeah, so that, that's a big thing. They, they do, as far as, uh, there is a lot of fees that they have to basically absorb on our behalf as far as when they go to like bringing in the pathologists, the experts and those type of things. Uh, but I thought that was a very, uh, positive and innovative way for us to save the county money.
Great. We'll make sure, um, make sure that your budget goes way down.
All right, I'll go work on numbers, get it back to you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If you have any questions, please let me know and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. Oh, 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 nine.
Morning.
Good morning.
Uh, me too, I'm gonna put this on your desk. You need one on your, you need that short, I can give it to you. But this is a short and simple breakdown of my budget. Our twenty twenty-five budget request is two million, two hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one. All that but twenty thousand is salaries. Uh, our appropriate budget in twenty, in twenty twenty-four was six, uh, two million, one hundred and six thousand. There's a difference of sixty thousand, nine hundred and nine, so how do, how do we come to that number, right? Where, where's that increased? So first, the, uh, six thousand, two hundred and nine, there was an error, uh, when inputting stuff for our budget last year, which last year was all salaries. We were shorted about six thousand, three hundred and nine dollars. In December, I brought this to Debbie's attention, we both agreed, I think I brought it to Jennifer and Sherry's attention, so it had to do with salaries and I also brought it to Kent's attention. We decided not to address it in January, February, March, cause we came up with ways where we could address it without having to add to our, bring it back in. But I really do need this money back for the year going forward, these are for salaries. Then the other thirty-four, six hundred, if you guys remember, last year we added two new people. One, we added a third of the way, a third of the year, the other we added, I think half the year, I think that's right. Anyways, that difference is, you know, so now we have to pay for two full year salaries, that difference is thirty-four thousand, six hundred dollars. So then, then that leaves twenty thousand dollars and, and what really is new spending that I did not have last year. And so what I'm asking the council to do is give us that additional twenty thousand dollars. This is not going towards salaries, this is going back into our non-salred lines. So if, uh, we've got a lot of turnover, but when I took over prosecutor in June of twenty eighteen, we had a budget where the council was appropriating approximately, it was all said and done through the money that we got from IT and we got from non-salred lines. It was close to a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in non-salred lines, right, that the prosecutor's office got from the county or got the benefit from IT by buying our, our, our hardware for us. Uh, since then, the prosecutor's office and working with the council, in order to get our salaries to where they need to be and also get our manpower where it needs to be, we've agreed to take on that, take on that money through our user fees. And, um, every year it's gone down, in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, those were zeroed out, you guys didn't pay any of those costs to run the prosecutor's office. And when we, when we talked about this, I said, this is something we could do, but eventually we're gonna have to bring that back in, these costs are gonna go up. So what I, the original proposal in twenty twenty-two when I was in front of this council is that in twenty twenty-four budget, we were brought twenty-five thousand dollars back in. I didn't pass that last year. And then we do twenty-five thousand dollars every year. At this point, I don't think we need to do twenty-five thousand dollars every year, I think it would be prudent for us to do twenty thousand dollars next year and look at doing ten to fifteen every year after that, to get that non-salred line back up. Will we continue to use those funds, uh, for the, the not, what, what, the funds to try to offset and not do that if we don't have to? But we have some major costs we've incurred this year. We've had a lot of trials, we've done more trials, we've done as many trials as, as of right now than we did all of last year. We've got another trial in a week and a half, we're gonna spend about four thousand dollars just to travel costs alone for our victims and our witnesses. We bought a car this year, brand new car, first time in ten years we've ever bought a brand new car, um, we've been lucky.
A new car for what?
I'm sorry?
A new car for what?
From what?
For what? Since you bought it, since the first time?
Yeah, for our investigator, our investigator. We only, we have had two, we've had two cars, um, since I've been prosecutor and they've always, we've gotten hand-me-downs. Like White Town gave us, you know, a ten-year-old car, twelve-year-old car for a dollar. In ten years, we've never had a new car. And so we bought one this year. It actually was, it was a year old, but we got a great deal on it. I worked with the sheriff's department to locate one, great deal. Uh, next year, um, we've got a, we've got like a fifteen-year-old Tahoe that's about a hundred and eighty thousand miles. It's the cost to keep, uh, keep that and also the gas cost alone on that car ridiculous. So we need to buy a new car next year. So I'm not asking the council to pay for any of that, we're gonna use that with our user fees and all of our, all of our funding, but that's a cost next year that's gonna be likely thirty-five to forty thousand, if not higher.
The vehicle that he did purchase this year is for the investigator that has the, um, dog, Hunter?
Yeah. Yeah, Hunter. So that's been, you know, guys, and we got Hunter for free.
Yeah.
Um, Hunter, over the weekend, I don't, you guys follow him, people on my Facebook, but we had a situation over the, over the weekend where we had, um, some children who were a witness to a, a pretty bad crime. And at eight o'clock on Friday night, Hunter, this handler, my prosecutor, were at the CAC, you know, being, like, their dog was a, a support dog for them.
Okay.
Again, no cost to this council, but so not a good cost to the county. So, uh, we've got, also this year we did implement a mental health policy, mental health wellness program. We based it, we met with the sheriff's department, and then we met with Pathways and we're kind of using theirs as a guidebook for us. We have, we just instituted phase one, uh, we are, um, Pathways, I really like Pathways, um, we met with them, they had come and gave a presentation to our, to our people, you know. In the past six months to a year, I've really realized how much we are absorbing intensive secondary trauma. Really kind of became known to me, you know, two things have happened, after our triple murder, we kind of did a debrief with our team, it was obvious we needed to talk and have those issues. Then the other day, on one of our cases, I had a paralegal who was trying to catalog photos and she's going like this, cause she can't, she can't look out, they're so gross. You know, and so we see stuff like that and it just became obvious and apparent that we needed to do this. So our program is really just a mirror of what the sheriff's department is doing, um, in terms of that. And so I will tell you that it's completely confidential, I have no idea who's going, the bills we get say BCPO one, BCPO two, I don't know who it is. So those are additional costs that we are incurring this year. So that's really, that's my whole presentation.
When you're four one to twenty thousand, you're asking for, it's broken down into travel expenses and anything else.
Yes.
Trial.
Yeah, trial expense and, and the, uh, and the CAC.
Yeah, trial costs.
So that's really the only additional, that's really the only true additional we're asking for.
You have like CACs or, what is the fund that you said that you're taking?
Four nine three one and four nine three four.
How much are in those funds?
Uh, last I looked, one had a hundred thousand, one had like two forty?
How much are those from we bring in every year?
Well, that's a good question because you really can't count on those every year, um, because like the, the one that's two nine three four is depending on traffic tickets. So we're trending down in traffic tickets. Eight years ago, we had seven thousand traffic tickets, but last year we had forty-four hundred traffic tickets.
Oh, don't worry, they're coming back up with part twos.
Well, no, what that was is we had to bring, we had to bring all the traffic tickets that were at Thorntown already, they were, they were already filed. And so we just had to add them to our system, those weren't new tickets for us, they were already been, had been processed. We had to give them, they all had to get new cause numbers, new court dates and all that, they'd already been filed, so it's, it's taking in fifty, whatever the number was, it's ridiculous. But we had to bring in ten years worth of traffic tickets from Thorntown or more.
So I'm assuming your trial expenses are much more than ten thousand?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, no, yeah, this is just a, like I said, we need to eventually bring that back up, so, because this year we will spend more than we take in, in our user, user fees. And next year we're gonna, we're gonna make more expenses as well. We've got a murder trial coming up and we have two dealing causing death cases. As the coroner talked about, we have significant costs when it comes to expert witnesses.
Yeah, that's nice.
Where we're spending, I had to pay just to talk to the pathologist that, you know, the, the servant pathologist at the corner, just talking on the phone, we have to pay them, okay? We need to pay their travel time here, like my prosecutors, it's cheaper for us to travel with them to them, pay them to meet with them there and then come back, right? Then I had to pay their travel cost to come here to testify, their wait time, their court time and to go back. And as we all know, court cases don't go on a timed schedule. You know, you might say, hey, be here at nine o'clock and you might not get on the stand until one o'clock.
Is it, is it safe to say that the, your biggest trial costs are because it's the murder case and the death?
Well, we have dealing causing, like giving dealing causing death cases, a lot of, uh, we also use experts in child molestation cases, we have travel expenses, last year.
Right, but I'm sorry, what I'm saying is the, the cost for like your more egregious cases with the murders and the dealing with death assume an exceptionally higher cost?
There, yes, that cost has exponentially grown over the last ten years.
Right, I think, what I'm saying, out of the normal caseloads you had, do those cases tend to have the higher costs?
Yes.
All right, how do we have those in that?
Well, okay, so level five is higher, we have about, we'll file about a hundred, between a hundred and fifty and, this one? We'll file about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty now. So we've got a level four case right now that's gonna travel, we, we will have travel expenses of four thousand dollars. So the amount of trials we're doing are, is up, okay? We will double the amount of trials we do in a year, so we're almost doubling some of our, our expenses because we're trying more of the higher level cases.
Thank you, how many, how many murder cases, dealing with death cases do you do a year, that was my question?
This year we tried one, we got another one, we have three, so this year we do, we're scheduled to do five.
But you have, like, outside of the death cases, murder cases, like there's trial expenses for lower level cases?
Oh, yeah.
Like if you have to have an expert for an OWI case or?
Well, dealing, uh, uh, we had a case that did not go to trial, we had significant, it was a, um, operating vehicle while intoxicated causing death. Not only did we have a significant trial expenses, they had significant pre-trial investigative expenses. So where we had to have people look at, you know, that look at the physics of a car accident. And then, so, you know, they'll get those experts and tell them the physics of the, of the incident. Then what happens is we have to go to the discovery process and it'll be depositions. Those experts that they used don't come free.
Right.
I had to pay for them to then testify at, at a deposition. Now, we just had one that recently pled guilty, but we still had five thousand dollars worth of expenses. Those types of expenses we have never had before. The whole area of law enforcement is becoming very high-tech, we have to do a lot more stuff and that's bringing, we should do a lot more when it comes to technology. And that's bringing a lot more experts into the field where we have to pay for those costs. Whether it's they get an expert, then we have to get one, um, we've got a murder case out of Zions, we're, we're gonna have to hire a, a mental health expert. You know, so.
Of the, oh, sorry, of the two funds that you have, how, what is the annual run rate of how much a year is that they got for us?
Okay, so that one, so one of them is twenty thousand, uh, the CAC one, twenty thousand dollars a year. And the other one, trial expenses, um, shoot, I don't have it in front of me. I can just tell you, we've, I mean, I know we already spent over thirty to forty thousand dollars of trial expenses this year. I've got four thousand, yep, yesterday I okayed four thousand dollars for a trial expense for one new case and that was just for travel, it doesn't include anything else.
So you've got a twenty thousand dollar a year run rate of expenses and you don't know what the revenue is on that one a year? I think you're on.
Revenue.
Are you bringing in income or revenue for the two funds that we talked about?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, what did I?
The revenue, it fluctuates every year, there is no stable amount because, as I said, like the traffic tickets, first off, you start with like, say, four thousand tickets. Then, then we have to see who qualifies and then we have to see who's gonna pay it, right? So it's, it isn't, it is one of those things where it's like property taxes where someone has to pay, pay that, so, uh, those, it's been averaging between eighty and, the one, the deferral, diversion is averaging between eighty and a hundred thousand a year. Now, the, the diversion one, it's hard to say because what happens is in the past, grant money was put in there and so I can't really tell what, 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 I, it's hard to tell what is exactly from diversion and what is from other stuff that's getting put in there. All right, that's, that's the hard one to tell. What we do, uh, what we do know is that the diversion, we are kind of, they're, we get money from that and we're looking at, like, one example is, whenever the state of Indiana decides they're going to, eventually I think the state of Indiana might legalize marijuana or decriminalize it, which probably will happen in the future, right? That's one of our sources of income, that, that will, that will go away because we won't go with diversions things anymore, so.
What percentage of motor vehicle traction go into court? And, and does it?
Through a trial or?
Yeah, through a trial.
See, we'll file five thousand, uh, not that much, I mean, it's, it's a miniscule amount.
Most of them say, okay, I have a speed, here's my money.
Yeah, but see, that money goes to the clerk, not us, so that money, those, those go to court costs and to, and to the clerk and the state. I don't give that money, we get the money where we, a person has no criminal history, no driving history, we get a portion of, you often them was called a defer, you know, a traffic. So you have traffic ticket, you have no background history, you're speeding just ten miles over, five miles over, uh, you get an opportunity to pay a similar fine and it stays off your driver. We get a portion of that one, additionally to a portion of that money, a portion of that money goes off, it's off.
And you use those monies in your office for a little bit of everything?
Yeah, we use it to pay for, um, all the computers, um, the computers that we buy. So every, every four years, we have to, I heard that's really good for asking, talking about that, about replacing computers over four years. I can tell you in our office, because we have a high usage of using those, our batteries in year four are done. So, uh, we have a high failure rate of batteries in year four because we are using those. We use our laptops in court, you know, twenty, you know, every single day, all the time. Four years is what, I mean, we used to have three years, four years is about the max, I think we can probably assume. We also pay for chairs, we pay for monitors, uh, we pay for, we have a, we pull Wi-Fi for, you know, in our office, pick that. We pay for, um, any expense, uh, training, uh, we pay for anything but the state called training expenses, pay for all the trains. So like right now, um, I, we help pay for, um, some people to go to Dallas for a national child, child abuse conference. We have people going to a conference, we help with trial add-on, so we pay for that. We pay for our on-call out of those funds, anything that, that costs operate our office, we pay out of those funds, thank you.
Can you, sorry. Can you look at the two funding, they have to do the five-year average of what the revenues are with what I'm gonna pay?
With that being said, is there any other questions for the company?
I appreciate this, I think this is very helpful, um, sort of gives us a sense for, you know, what the difference is and what it's made up of, so I, I would be in favor of you doing this every year, maybe you do, but appreciate that.
Very good, thank you.
With that being said, uh, as far as his budget, you know, less salaries, do we have a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more question, um, the CAC funds, that's money you're helping to pay for things that are happening at that.
Well, no, it's, it's part of our contract, so they provide services to us, so they have contracts with all of us.
Okay.
So our contract is twenty thousand dollars a year.
Okay, um, just so, I don't know if everyone in the council is aware, there is potentially gonna be a cut in funding for CAC?
This year, it's been stayed off, this, for this year.
It has, okay, okay, that's something we just need to be aware of in the future, like she may lose, what is it, up to forty percent of her funding from the federal government?
The book of funding from the, from the public government is going to go away, um, I, I something else you guys related this year, saying you were expecting to see a significant decrease in our book, book of funding. Ours was three thousand dollars out of a hundred and fifty, only it's one fifty-five, we got one fifty-two, that, you know, they were expecting a safe, they were expecting forty percent decrease, they did not see that this year. We were told that the agencies who got, who historically got those grants, that, um, historically got those grants, they and that used the money fully, got almost all their grants. So there are people that get grants and they don't spend the full amount.
Right.
Those are the ones that got their grants significantly, not so, you know, so the CAC, the prosecutor's office, cause we historically use a hundred percent of our grant, right? We, we had little to no, um, change, they think, they had little to no changes. But that is something that's going to impact us because they, they are, they do provide a lot of services in our partner law enforcement prosecutor's office, CCA. So we're working at the state level, at the county level to, I'm sorry, state level and the federal level to address that.
We have to maintain that office for child victims to be interviewed at. They cannot go to a jail or a police station to be interviewed, so.
Last thing I'm hearing is, uh, the prosecutor's, the, the prosecutor and attorney's counsel is, um, heavily involved this year in trying to find some solutions for counties and funding. That is the one sole mission this year, uh, in this budget cycle. I don't wanna go too, too much there, but they're really working hard with, uh, to address that for next year. It, it could potentially save this county a lot.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks a lot.
So do we have a motion of less salaries?
I make a motion to approve zero, 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 nine as submitted minus salaries.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been part of the vote, a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those favorites, if I say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Thanks, Ken.
Thanks, Ken.
Oh, we've got that one?
We don't do the average, do you?
No, no, I don't do the average.
It's, they, it's not for the law enforcement, so.
We will take a slight break and, till ten thirty, we'll start with maintenance and then we'll go further up.